Good evening and welcome to the March 1st, 2017 Meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up tonight is the approval of our minutes from February fif-- actually, what I should say for the record is that alternate Phil Wessel is participating this evening as not all other commissioners are present. So with that, first up is the approval of our minutes from February 15th, 2017. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of February 15th, 2017, it's ready to the record.
Second.
It's moved in second, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes unanimously. We have-- record class are normally next, but there are none this evening, I guess? Is that right?
That is correct.
And that takes us to our signed permit agenda, and there's one tonight for sign dash seven three six zero dash 2017, the law offices, Elling &amp; Elling, and the Banner Companies Monument Sign at 443 North Frederick Avenue in the CD Quarter Development Zone. It's a sign adjustment presented by Greg Mann. Good evening.
Good evening. This is staff before you tonight to present sign application, sign seven three six zero dash 2014, which is question approval for a new forty-two point six square foot attorney illuminated monument sign. The sign is located at 443 North Frederick Avenue in the Zone CD. This comes before the planning commission because the applicant is requesting two sign adjustments pursuant to section twenty-four dash two thirteen AF, which permits the planning commission to grant adjustments to any portion of the sign ordinance. The first requested adjustment is to permit the sign to be located within the public right of way, and the second adjustment is to allow letter heights less than seven inches. The subject application was originally presented to the planning commission on January eighteenth, 2017. During the meeting, the commission raised concerns related to the letter height adjustment request. As such, the applicant has revised the proposed sign to increase the majority of letter heights to seven inches, all except for a one-line text which is still at four point five inches. And here tonight to present the application and answer the questions you may have is the applicant Todd Elling.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I just want to first off, again, express my apologies to the city for the way that we initiated this process. Obviously, we were frustrated. We had tried for a couple of years to get a permit, and it wasn't happening. This is by no means a legitimate excuse for the way that we behaved. In fact, there was a board member that suggested that we kind of had an adult temper tantrum, which I agree with. Bottom line is that we're attorneys, and we are held to, I think, a higher degree of conduct, which we fell well short below, and I apologize.
Fair enough.
That being said, moving forward in what we're proposing this evening, hopefully we can come to a fair and equitable resolution and approval for our sign. As you note on the revised sign above, we've worked very hard with our designer to somehow make this work, and as you'll know, we've made the following changes. Number one, the letter height now purports to the appropriate size, with the exception of the Banner Company lettering, which is the only deviation. Our designer advised us that the Banner Company lettering just simply could not be altered. Everything else purports to the, I believe it's the seven-inch letter height. Number two, as you'll note, we decreased the word count on the sign. More specifically, we got rid of our practice areas of personal injury, family law, and criminal law, which I believe Mr. Kaufman had suggested when we were here on January eighteenth. In all honesty, I was not altogether thrilled of disposing of my practice areas. I believe that it would have filtered a lot of traffic and walk-in individuals coming in if we had tailored it to a specific practice area, but nonetheless, I could tell that that was a big factor for the city. And so I kind of have waved my white flag on that so that hopefully we could come to a fair and equitable resolution here. Number three, the city can be assured the only illumination on the sign will be the letters and the numbers, which I believe purports to the ordinance as well. Lastly, I would ask the board at least to acknowledge the amount of money that we have spent on this whole entire project. While some of these costs are no doubt our fault, we have spent close to forty thousand dollars on this project. That encompasses the design renderings, the sign itself, the installation, the landscaping, the electric work that will need to be done, attorney's fees, which, as you know, we were before you last time with an attorney, we could obviously no longer afford to keep that up, and so that's why we're representing ourselves in this matter. And also, the money that we'll need to spend on revising the sign, which we're being told is going to be pretty much the same cost as the initial sign. In any event, I do appreciate the board's time and consideration and hope that you'll grant our permit and open to any questions.
All right, very good. Any questions?
Not directly, yeah.
Anyone else here? Sure, please.
If I could make just one point.
Name, name.
David Elling. I understood, of course, the purpose for the seven-inch letters. I do want to point out one thing. While it's my son, obviously, as you can tell from the name, I know he wanted the practice areas in there, and to some extent, because nowadays you say you're an attorney. Across the street from where I live, there's an attorney. He does, he works in the steel industry. The only thing we have in common is we're both an attorney. Otherwise, I wouldn't have a clue what he's doing, and he wouldn't have a clue what I'm doing. But I want to point out, while the Banner Companies are not seven inches, when people come, and Mr. Banner is here if you wanted to ask him, when people are coming to the building for the Banner Companies, he has retail stores, people aren't drawn to that as the word "law offices," and I think that was a concern, that is, people would drive down North Frederick Avenue, and so that there wouldn't be signage less than seven inches about the law offices. They could see it clearly. I, quite frankly, thought you could see it clearly anyhow, but that being said, the only thing it isn't is Banner Companies, but anybody coming to the building for Mr. Banner and his companies, they're not being drawn to it for the sign. They're going because they have appointments with him. There is obviously no retail out of the building whatsoever, so I wanted to make that clear.
Sure, sure. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else looking to say anything about the application? Okay. Greg, what's the recommendation?
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendation, grant approval of sign seven three six zero dash 2014. Law offices of Elling &amp; Elling and the Banner Companies Monument Sign, finding to be in compliance with sections twenty-four, two twelve of the city code with two conditions.
Okay. Any concerns on the application as amended tonight?
There's a lot of presentation. I think the only thing that sort of helped me understand what the exception would be for the letter sizing was some helpful testimony. They're related somewhat to the ordinance. That is essentially, it's not a retail establishment, doesn't need traffic direction, the wayfinding consideration that the ordinance lays out isn't necessarily needed for that lower lettering. So that was, that part was helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the applicant's taking consideration, removing the practices, the field of practice. I don't think it would have actually fit on there properly anyway with seven-inch lettering. Would have been really crowded sign.
Would have been impossible.
Right, exactly. So that in itself, I think, and is that maize and blue that you're making the sign out of?
What's that?
Is it maize and blue, just aside, the colors?
No.
It's just a thing.
Maize and aqua.
No, it's a Michigan thing, never mind.
So we had to get the go-blue in there somewhere.
Of course.
I'm a Miami fan, so you're not going to get anything there.
All right. Any other concerns, questions?
No.
I do think that it reads much better, and I will reiterate two points we made last time. One is, the purpose of our sign ordinance is to create something that's less distracting, something that's easy to read, wayfinding, not advertising, it's wayfinding, it's the demarcation for businesses or purpose for businesses. I do want to acknowledge, and I'm sorry you find yourself in the hole, some number of dollars from this process, but I want to make clear that you all came to us long after you should have and had invested that money. I don't believe anything that we've asked you to do tonight, or from the last hearing to the application, cost anything more than what the expected cost would be of an average business coming before the city to get a sign approval that complied with our ordinance. So I think, I don't believe there's anything that's been sprung on you that would have added cost. And I would reiterate that I think staff has done a great job in working through this, and I know it's been, there's been some difficulties and rights of way and some of the other constraints that caused that, but I appreciate that you've gotten this sort of logical conclusion, I think a reasonable interpretation of what our ordinance is, and I actually don't have any issues with the slightly smaller letters on the secondary business mark, because as you said, it really doesn't need to be loud and large to maybe effective for what the purposes are. So I'm ready to move this forward for approval if you all concur. So the staff is recommending approval with two conditions. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that, based on the exhibits submitted and staff reports, staff findings, and staff recommendation, that we grant approval of sign seven three six zero dash 2014, and finding to be in compliance with section twenty-four dash two twelve of the city code with the two conditions is written to the record.
Second. It's moved in second, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next up is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for BOA dash seven five one six dash 2017. Is it the Caesarean Camden? Is that what it is?
Caesarean.
Camden, okay. Five thirty-three Summit Hall Road in the RPT Medium Density Residential Zone, and this is for a special exception, childcare use, and Caroline Sidon is presenting her staff. Good evening, Caroline. How are you?
Good evening. I apologize, my applicant is not here. I'm not sure whether she did. I'm not sure what happened, but I will try.
Are you comfortable moving forward without?
I will, yeah. Hopefully, I'll be able to answer any questions, and it should be pretty straightforward based on the information you already have. But this is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for a child daycare, a home child daycare center at five thirty-three Summit Hall Road, which is shown right here. It is the third townhouse from the left in this row right here, off of West Deer Park. This is the elementary school and Summit, Summit Hall Elementary School and Summit Hall Road. And it's in the RPT zone, which is Medium Density Residential Zone, and a child daycare facility is permitted in a townhouse for eight or fewer children in accordance with section twenty-four forty-three A, one of the zoning ordinance. Ms. Camden has had the fire inspectors come to review the conditions of the house, and they have all approved it, so she, that's, she can go forward with the state, and she just needs a zoning approval from the Board of Appeals at this point.
Okay.
There are four conditions that will be included in a draft resolution to the board pending your recommendation tonight, and if you have other questions, I will try to answer them for her.
Maybe just to set up for our own, actually, my own knowledge. I trust the other commissioners are smarter about this than I am, but the reason we would make a recommendation to the Board of Appeals on something like this is what the changes is.
It's a special exception that goes to the Board of Appeals. Part of the process for that is a recommendation from the planning commission to review any zoning issues that you all may have. I mean, in this particular case, there's no change to
Right.
To a site plan or to the building itself, so.
And it seems to fall within the, with the, I guess, the guidelines that are established for
Yes.
The special exception, so there's not even anything outside the
No.
What's been contemplated.
Nothing unusual about it.
All right.
It could be both existing infrastructure and planning, or even future, you know, infrastructure and planning. If we were looking at properties around it and stuff like this to know what's happening from a business and your standpoint in any property, it's always a great idea. But my only question is a total nitpicker, but for her protection, condition number three, the maximum of eight children, does it include or not include children that are related to the business owner or house or homeowner?
If the children are her own, and they are, and she's taking care of them during those hours in the daycare, I believe it includes them.
Okay. All right, great. Just wanted to make sure. Didn't want to eliminate it.
Yeah.
Didn't need to be. That's great. Any other questions? Is there anyone here that is going to speak on this application or wants to comment on? Okay. Caroline, the recommendation, please.
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report, findings, and recommendation, recommend approval of special exception BOA seven five one six 2017 to the Board of Appeals with the four conditions as listed in the staff comments.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I think with the approval applying only to this operator, it doesn't last any longer than this homeowner uses. I think that's reasonable.
Each O A approval is great.
Right, right. All right. Any issues with the request? Okay. Staff is recommending that we recommend approval to the Board of Appeals. Is there a motion, please?
I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff reports, findings, and recommendations, recommend approval of special exception BOA seven five one six dash 2017 to the Board of Appeals with the four conditions as listed and written to the record.
Second.
It's moved in second, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. Okay, thanks very much, Caroline.
Sure.
Next up is, oh, and Caroline, you get to stay for this.
I get to stay.
All right. Is our site plan agenda, and the first one on that is for SP dash seven four seven five dash 2016, iFly indoor skydiving at ninety-three eighteen Gaither Road in E1 Urban Employment Zone, and this is for concept plan review and approval. Good evening.
Good evening again. Staff is before you tonight to present concept site plan application, SP seven four seven five 2016. Subject property is located at ninety-three eighteen Gaither Road and is in the E1 Urban Employment Zone. Just to orient you to the site, this is Gaither Road, all the way at the end of Gaither Road, off of the aerial would be Shady Grove Road, kind of further, much further down, and I-270 to the south and west, and I guess north as well. The applicant is requesting to construct an eight thousand five hundred and eighty-nine square foot recreational use building for an iFly indoor skydiving facility on an existing surface parking lot. The proposed facility is in addition to the currently developed ninety-seven thousand three hundred and seventy square foot office building on the property, which you can see right here. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with section twenty-four one sixty-eight, which requires the planning commission, wrong section, requires planning commission to grant concept plan approval. The existing office building was originally granted final site plan approval for S-674 in nineteen eighty-two, and the application this evening is being presented for concept plan approval only and for the additional building on the property, and
Why is that? Why are we doing concept plan and not just amended to final plan?
Amendment to final site plan. Just simply because it's a new building and an unusual building, and in advance of them spending the amount of time and resources to do a preliminary plan, we thought we would kind of get everybody's review of it.
Okay. Good, all right. Thanks.
So first up is Matt Vickery from iFly, and he just wanted to introduce himself and say a few words, and Brian Donnelly is here from a Cruise Hendricks and Glasscock as the engineer.
Great. I'd like to have my cousin at first. There's a
Oh, is it?
I'm sorry. Well, everyone, thank you for letting us be here tonight. Just as a quick show of hands, how many people have actually skydived?
I have.
Excellent. Excellent.
I burnt my exeter.
Yeah. I won't do that. That's the idea behind this concept. iFly brings the dream of flight to retailers and to everyone else who wants to come and visit, come and try it, actually. You know, it's a military tech that's been brought to the civilian world. iFly is a unique experiential retailer, which is the hot buzzwords if you're a retail broker or developer.
I'm a huge fan of this.
Okay, exactly. If you've been to any ICSC or CCIM conferences.
I've been to one for twenty-five years.
Yeah, right. Exactly, exactly, right. So iFly has grown to over seventy locations across the globe, thirty-five in the States, even one on a cruise liner as well. So it's a pretty unique concept in that regard. The, we were talking about how the skydiving actually kind of takes place. There's wind tunnels, the building is a wind tunnel, and there's four GE engines, these turbines, that push the air around the outside of the building and up, and the skydiver's actually inside, floating on a cushion of air, and that's the reason why this is not an amusement ride. Each session, each time someone's in this wind tunnel, it's a unique experience. Your skill levels and how you learn how to do different things really gives you your own unique time in the tunnel, so it's really kind of neat in that regard. But I think, you know, some of the big things we want to make sure you guys understand is how committed iFly is to becoming, being a very responsible retailer and a business partner in the communities we're at, and we continue to always do that. We have a lot of military people under iFly in the ranks, and, you know, we're always looking for the best people out there to be a part of our team as well.
Are you, are these locations franchised, or do you
No, they are only
Operate them under one umbrella?
Pardon?
It's owned and operated under one umbrella company?
Yes, it is. It started off in a franchise kind of model that, I think, ended about ten years ago, and since then, it's all been underneath one entity.
Okay. What sort of traffic does it generate? So if you're, I assume you have one person there at a time, but what is the turnover over the course of an hour or a couple hours? And I'm really, where I'm driving at is, you know, what should we expect in terms of traffic, parking, you know, things like that?
So there's a couple of questions there, and I'll make sure I answer them completely. So actually, these wind tunnels can support, this model can support at least four to six people in it.
At a time.
A new person is going to be the instructor and that person doing it on the very first flight, just to make sure they feel comfortable, get the hang of it, probably about four to six times before somebody else gets in there. The traffic, I know we're doing a traffic study here. We've negotiated with the landlord, I believe, for forty parking spaces that are dedicated. Quite frankly, that's more than what we need.
I guess I'm trying, what I'm driving at is, do you see, like, I don't know, I'll just pick a number out of the hat, twenty people an hour come and go, five people come and go in an hour? I mean, what is the, just the general turnover like?
You know, did we come up with that specific information
Roughly.
For you in that traffic study?
Like in the mid twenties.
It was the mid twenties is what I've always seen.
During the peak.
So peak time, there's maybe twenty-five people in an hour, the turnover. Okay.
Right.
So relatively low, low impact in terms of, yeah.
Right, right. And there's an arc, as always, any retailer is going to have high periods and low periods as well.
We're a little bit uncertain about how to treat this use as a recreational use because it is so unique.
Right.
So we did take some historical data on other iFlies, imported that into the traffic study. We were just over the thirty peak hour trips, and we'll be doing a detailed traffic analysis.
And what are the hours? How late is it open, or how early is it open? What's the?
We're within the normal hours here. Each location kind of fluctuates, if you can appreciate that. I think, what was it, from ten to ten, something like that, or ten to eight?
It opens a little earlier than that. I think it's, yeah, eight-thirty, I think it is.
Okay. Each location is honestly different depending on what we're allowed to do through the ordinance in that location.
And what I'm driving at is, one of the nice things about the site you're picking is that you can, you're there potentially in off times for when the office is loading up the parking lot, so that's a good thing. I mean, just sort of getting a sense of
Right. So in the evenings is when we would probably have more people there, especially on the weekends, when that office park is at, hopefully, you know, not at full capacity.
Okay. Is there anything else going on there, like concession business, any other sort of sales, any other sort of things being sold, being done?
No, no, I mean, there's a minor retail with like hats and some t-shirts, I think some sweatshirts, and I think there might be some bottled water or something like that, but, you know, that's really what it comes down to.
But you don't cater to like a group of thirty who have a big party and then want to, you know, stick around for a
If there is a, there are parties like that, food would then be brought in by a local business.
Okay.
Like pizzas or something of that nature.
Yeah, okay.
Is there an ability for spectators to observe this from within or outside? How does, how's that
Yeah, that's actually one of the really neat components. The wind tunnel at the retail level is all glass. This glass is made, it's very expensive, special concave, you know, very unique glass that's made overseas and brought in, and all the other people watching, like maybe going through their initial training or looking at someone else, they can obviously watch that.
You're going in, you're not watching.
The reason we don't have a lot of windows on the exterior of our building is the idea of the flight, when you're in the chamber, they've done that before, and what took place was, you're looking out, and you're actually looking up. If you're looking down, you're falling. That's just kind of how the dynamics are associated with your body when the wind's passing by you. So you have to be looking up, and you're kind of looking up and in this direction. So it's one of the reasons why we don't have windows in the flight chamber area, because it's distracting and it's disorienting.
So observers really can't look in to see that process or watch the individual?
If you're outside of the building, no. Inside the building, yes. You're completely around it, it's kind of like a showcase. Imagine like a big fireplace in the center of a larger area, and everyone's just watching that, that sort of item going on.
Any other questions? I guess you'll get to the site plan a little bit, right, and show that, kind of what's next. The turbines that create the wind tunnel, are those, is there any outside noise to those?
No, that's always a question we get. It's, that's a fair question. Believe me, when I first became familiar with the concept, I was concerned about that as well. We are well below any decibel level that would be considered noise at the property line or even outside of the building. When the tunnel is on, you won't even know it if you're standing outside the building. You wouldn't even know it. Inside the building, you'd hear a little, you know, humming, but that's only inside the building.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the business side? All right. Do you want to go through the site planning strategy?
All right. Do you need to be over to do that?
Just probably to see the screen, but
Oh, let me give you a This is the same company that we see from ninety-five heading up past White Marsh, I'll
take it. Is it quite north of Baltimore?
That's right. Yeah, the, yes, yes, the Baltimore one. I think that opened two years ago.
White Marsh. Yeah, maybe, yeah, right about two, not quite two.
Great.
Okay. As Caroline mentioned, the overall tract area is six acres. The southern boundary borders on the Montgomery County-City-Gaithersburg line, so everything to the south is Montgomery County. Everything to the north, I should say, everything to the south and the east is Montgomery County, and everything really to the north is City of Gaithersburg. To the south is a industrial zone property within the county. So all the properties within Gaither Road and Gaither Drive are all very similar, two-story brick and block buildings, mixed use of light office, warehouse, and light industrial. Since it's the cul-de-sac, there's not a lot of traffic in that cul-de-sac aside from the UPS distribution center that's to the north. The majority of the office users are fairly low. The tenants currently in the building, a wide range of tenants. There's a church that does elderly daycare type facility. There's a golf center, some offices. So when we went through the parking tabulation, we did calculate the entire building as office, just so we can ensure any future growth or tenant changeover. So you did mention the parking, and we will be asking for a parking waiver when we come back in for the final site plan with the justification of the peak use. So we've got the recreational use at eighty-nine thousand
What was that going to be? It seemed like it was fairly modest in what I read, but what
Three spaces.
Yeah, across three hundred or something.
Yeah, so once we, because of the shape of that parking facility in the north, it wasn't a real efficient corner, so we didn't lose that many parking spaces in the overall net. And the original parking was striped out at ten foot, so we came back and did a mix of the low turnover and high turnover spaces in order to recoup a large portion of those spaces from the original layout.
Brian, if I could add to that, really, there's one floor of retail here, and the GLA is calculated because the way it's written, but those are rooms, those are areas where we have equipment, like offices, and those really only exist because you got this big building and you gotta put something else in there. So that is not usable area like you would see in probably other facilities as well.
Yeah, I'm guessing that the, that this building is, is so purpose-built, it's hard to imagine being used for anything else without being completely torn down and changed to something else, right? It's, yeah.
Yeah, tornado shelter or something like that.
Science experiments.
It can, it can withstand two-hundred-and-fifty mile an hour winds, so.
Yeah, I guess it can, yeah, yeah.
So currently, there's two existing access points, one off of Gaither Drive and one off of Gaither Road. As part of this site plan, we'll be requesting a third entrance that's going to be a little bit more of a direct route to iFly. Working with the adjoining property owner in order to get the required access easements. We've got an agreement in principle. We're still working through some final issues with Pepco because there's a transformer line pole on their property that we need to run across that, so until we get a final alignment on that piping, we don't want to get-
So will we be looking at a new subdivision for this or new plat, or is it more released from?
The original parcel was nine acres. There was some SHA taking, I think back in the mid-eighties. And so, right now, it's part of a parcel. So we're going to be coming in with a new record plat in its current configuration, but just in its net, net tract area.
But you're not subdividing that, that parcel and to create a new parcel for the, okay.
Correct, right, right. It'll be the current shape, just with defined boundaries without the taking. The forest conservation area for the site is going to be met through tree credits, tree canopy credits. We only have point-one-two acres of forest cover we need to meet based on disturbed area. The adequate public facility statement that we submitted meets all the requirements for fire, of course, school capacity and roads. We will be coming in with, like I mentioned, a detailed traffic study for the, we've met with Ollie and gotten a scoping analysis done, so we know the intersections to look at. We've already gotten the counts made.
Gaither Road, it's, it's public all the way into the cul-de-sac, right? That's-
Correct.
Okay, so you're only crossing the property line, or crossing a property line?
Yeah, actu- actually, Gaither Road, a portion of it is city-owned and a portion of it is county-owned. But we're going to be looking at the intersections in the, in the county as well, because of its proximity. Stormwater concept has been approved both by the City of Gaithersburg and by Montgomery County. The stormwater discharges to the south into a regional facility. So we submitted a concept to the county in order to confirm that the quantity volumes in that existing pond are, are adequate and the flow rates are adequate. I mentioned the site access. We will be asking for the parking waiver. In addition to that, we'll, there is a, we'll probably be coming in with a request for a, a signed modification because of the corporate image and corporate logo and signage that'll be associated with the building. It's slightly larger square footage than I think the code would allow, but it's more of a corporate image and because of the size of the building, we'll be, you know, be coming with a slight variance for requests of the size of the building size.
Just, at, at what level, Caroline, do you think it's, it's height, overall area?
The overall square footage of the signage that they're proposing is more than a hundred square feet, which is the, the maximum permitted by the sign ordinance.
Just on the two-seventy side or is it all?
On both sides. And then there's also, I think it's, we'll get to it later, there's a little iFly logo on the northern side of the building that is an icon sign and that will come to you as an icon sign. But this, this indoor skydiving is on both sides of the building. You can see it here, too.
The idea behind that, if I may, is, as you've pointed out, this building is so unique, you have to tell people what it is. If you don't, they really don't know what it is. Actually, we kind of have fun with this. We, we put up during construction, we have this little thing that says, "What is this?" And we get some very interesting responses, I will say that. Some people know what it is and some other ones are very unique for a whole nother time. But it's, it's, that's why that signage is so important to us as a retailer.
How much, Caroline, do you think is over a hundred? Is it a?
I, I don't think it's much over a hundred. It's in the pa, it should be in the package I'll find it.
Sixty-six by four.
One thirty-five.
Yeah.
It's not gross, Lee.
Well, here it is. It is a lot over. No, that's total. This is the iFly logo that I was referring to.
I think it's about two-hundred-and-sixty.
No, that's-
So we were trying to do the percentage of the building's square footage as well.
I'm sure it's well below, if, if you did the percentage, the ten percent of the building, it's, it would meet that, no problem. But we do have that one hundred square foot cap and, and allowance for the planning commission to go above that cap. And, and we've done that on several buildings facing two-seventy.
Two-seventy seems to be a, a consideration.
On the plans, it does look like it says eight percent of the building square footage is the proposed sign, so it is below the ten percent requirement.
Okay. Okay, what else?
Just to wrap it up with the site, I mean, we do meet all the develop, other development standards with setback heights, green space. I think, you know, if we just go to this view from two-seventy, just to give a relative idea of the massing relative to adjoining buildings and the views that we anticipate from I-two-seventy. Building's sixty-seven feet tall, the allowable zoning height's seventy feet, so we're within the, the height regulations at the, see the building elevations.
I'm sorry.
The, the, the side isn't all of this kind of concrete?
So, on the, so the, yeah, just to real brief, the tunnel component of the building is, we call them return, return air towers, rats. So these sides that you're seeing right now that kind of pull out a little bit, that we can, can, at this location, we're going to do it out of steel because of the seismic situation in this area. But it's going to have a Nevis looking finish, just like it would if it was a precast. Because with precast, to get the colors that we want, you put the same Nevis finish on it. So it's, it's all the same really at that point. The, the blue vertical stripes are just what they are. Where it has the indoor skydiving area, that's actually where the GE fans sit, where we're contracting the air and pushing it out, and that's where we're gaining that force as well to, to get everything that we need to do.
Okay. All right. Is that the presentation? All right, nice presentation. Is there anyone here that's, wants to comment on this application? All right. Caroline, what, what do we need to do tonight? We're looking at preliminary site plans, so what's the recommendation?
Concept plan.
Or, concept plan, excuse me.
So just, I wanted to mention that you should each have some revised conditions that I left for you. We just had to tweak them slightly to accommodate some ongoing easement, the, the way the easements are being structured with the adjacent property owner. But if, you want me to wrap up now?
I think so.
Okay. Staff recommends the planning commission based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, staff findings, and staff recommendation. Grant SP seven-four-seven-five-two-zero-sixteen iFly Recreation Use Concept Site Plan Approval, finding it conceptual in compliance with Section twenty-four-one-seventy of the City Code with the five conditions that you have before you.
Okay, very good. All right. I guess I'll open with, with sort of a basic statement, which is, it's going to be really hard to make any arguments that, that it's, it has compatibility or not, since it's such a new, a new concept. But I do think, one thing that's very exciting is it does bring this dimension we've talked about in some of the master plan sessions with, you know, another hot, another, a version of recreation that's something entirely different and, and much more impressive than sort of some of the conventional things. So I think it's a, it's great to see that come into the city. And I, and I don't think that there's anything fundamentally wrong with the site planning strategy. I think there's some little things to tweak, obviously, in final with how you want to get trees to work into the, into the landscape and maybe, maybe structure some of the ingress egress. But I can't imagine that with the amount of parking on that site, that three spaces is going to be a, a real concern for us. I mean, just, you know, we can't approve it formally until the final site plan, but that seems like a reasonable waiver, a reasonable percentage, or a reasonable hit for, for parking. And then anticipating that, that your peak use is probably not at the same time that the offices are fully occupied or fully, fully parked, that's, that's, that's okay too, right? I think the only thing, I've got a little bit of caution, and I don't, I don't know what we'll do about it until we kind of get there, but it may be a little aggressive on the, on the signage and identity, just in context with everything else around there. But, you know, I think that's worth discussion too, because there's, it's a very unique building type, it's a unique service, it's a unique experience, all that kind of stuff, so. And it's on two-seventy, so I'm not sure there's, that we're protecting a lot of, you know, well, well-guarded context there either, so it's, it's kind of ours to do with what we want to think. But that's the only place I think we'd want to put some more discussion around it before it was a wholehearted, let's do it.
Yeah, we just, there's definitely two sides to this building and they're wildly different. So when you're looking at justifications for, you know, two and a half times the code, sort of typical code constraint, I would really look at those two different sides differently and see if, see if, you know, your efforts, your, you know, brain cells and your signage are being somewhat wasted on that, on that, you know, on the other side, on the side not, you know, facing away from two-seventy.
The, the one where you're coming down Gaither Road?
Yeah.
Well, even there, you're coming in kind of from the end of the building, so I don't know, I'm not sure what that broadside facing northeast is really doing for you. But, you know, you guys can study it on the site, you know, step back from the site in, in all, all angles and see what makes sense, but.
Yeah, I think I'm just advocating not, not to be doing ham-handed about it, but just look at it and see where you're actually, who, who actually would see that signage to, before you argue that you need it.
Okay.
I mean, one of my, my one and only concern is, is not necessarily with the building itself, but I think signage and wayfinding is going to be the main challenge on this property as it has been on several other properties back there. Not so much visibility for two-seventy, but people who are trying to find the place, coming down Shady Brook Road, turning onto Gaither Road, and really knowing that they got to go all the way to the end and find it when they can't see it. And, and even looking at your site plan, the entrance, the easement that you're getting to come across the adjacent property, there's really no good place on, on this property to put an entryway sign out on the road. So I think, I think you're going to have that as the bigger challenge and making signs on the building bigger because of the way it's sighted isn't going to solve that.
Right, yeah.
If, if I can add to that, you, you, you look at these, this real estate and you could probably appreciate, we're not going for the A-plus-plus real estate. We want, you know, for it to make the concept and perform a work, it, it just doesn't, you can't get that. You do every once in a while, ask some great deal, that's wonderful, but from a prototype development standpoint, we really don't normally do that. And I would tell you that most times, we are backing around and people have got to do all kinds of neat little turns and it's kind of a cult following and people find us. They always do. The, one of the ideas associated with the signage on that Gaither kind of elevation or let's call it like the, your viewpoint when you're driving towards the property, that was the idea I was, when I was looking at that, when I'm driving down there even tonight and going, that's exactly what I'm going to see. That's going to draw me back down there, you know, after, you know, I have dinner at the Don Julio place, you know, I mean, that's going to turn, yep, there, there it is, it's right there. From about that distance, I would be able to identify that building at that time. Regarding the building's location on the site, we really try to make sure that we're getting as much exposure on the expressway, you know, that's hypercritical to us. And the, the signage on that sign, that side as well, on that elevation is always important.
Is this something of a deviation from your original business plan? Because I believe the one in White Marsh is associated or right in a shopping center complex as well as, there's one in Yonkers, I believe, New York? That's in a very large shopping center?
There are, there are times. So the real estate strategy varies with, with the marketplace. There's times I could tell you in, like right next to O'Hare, it's in a, in a little neat community development that was a, a retail, restaurant kind of mix and we were perfect for that location. When we get those opportunities, that's great. But I will tell you, many times, we are off the beaten path in a industrial kind of complex or an office complex and we have the people there that make it, that makes it work, so.
I'm picking over Trudy's shoulder in her computer, she's looking at Google Earth. And the fact is that Gaither Road turns, couple of turns, and I think that, given the height and the size of the signage, you will be able to see, scope it out for quite a bit of distance. Because Gaither Road takes slight turn north and then it goes into the cul-de-sac. So I think you will be able to spot that building from way back almost to the intersection with Shady Brook.
That's good. Okay. Well, I guess for, for concept site plan, concept right now, preliminary concept. I think it's a strong, it's a strong proposal. I'd, I'd encourage to go full forward with this. And the presentation of the sign and, and identity package, whatever that is, let's just like staff dive into that a little bit, pun intended, to, to, you know, to really, really understand that, that whatever those waivers are, are coming, they're appropriate and they, they make sense. I mean, one of the issues we'll have is that, and we'd love to see some redevelopment along two-seventy, we're seeing it now with you and some other projects. We don't want to turn that back into a large, you know, collection of really loud and oversized billboards and, and marketing and things like that. We have to be careful that we're, we're staying true to the intent of our sign ordinance and, and the reasons that we have it. But there are certainly exceptions and there are certainly reasons to do things a little differently, so just let's be very thoughtful and careful about how that's, that's handled. But we can get to that, I think, as, as you move down, down the process. But any other concerns before we move forward? Last comments, okay? I'm, as I said, I'm, I'm really happy to see, see a business like this coming to the city, so, so thank you for, for bringing it forward and I hope, I hope it all falls into place. We have a recommendation from staff for approval of a concept plan plus five conditions, right?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff reports, their findings, and staff recommendations, I move that we recommend that we grant SP seven-four-seven-five-dash-two-zero-sixteen Concept Site Plan Approval, finding it conceptual in compliance with Section twenty-four-dash-one-seventy of the City Code with the five conditions as read into the record.
I think it should say conceptually in compliance.
Did I say? Finding it conceptually in compliance.
Okay, any other? All right.
Second.
So moving to second, and I'll apparently say aye.
Aye.
Passing unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck. Look forward to seeing, seeing this come together.
What, what we're planning and what we've advised them is to go ahead and combine preliminary and final and do-
Oh, I think that's reasonable.
That's good.
Final step that, so.
Yeah. Very good. All right, thank you all. Have a good evening. Next up is Site Plan AFP-dash-seven-four-eight-eight-dash-two-zero-seventeen Crown Neighborhood Two, MX, in the MXD Zone. New architecture for the Wormont Homes for rear load lots in Crown Neighborhood Two. This is a limited final plan. Presenting for staff is Greg Mann again. No Rob tonight, huh?
No Rob. Good evening again. This is for application AFP-dash-seven-four-eight-eight-dash-two-zero-seventeen, requesting approval for additional final architecture elevations. The single-family detached rear-load lots within Crown Neighborhood Two. Neighborhood Two received final site plan approval on September seventh, two-zero-eleven as application SP-dash-eleven-dash-zero-zero-one-one. Additionally, the planning commission approved Wormont's overall final architecture for the single-family detached rear-load lots with application AFP-dash-four-five-eight-one-dash-two-zero-fourteen on May fourth, twenty-first, two-zero-fourteen. As proposed by the applicant, the newer unit type will provide additional options for potential future homeowners. And here tonight, present the application, answer any questions you may have. The applicant, Jimmy Terella from Wormont Homes.
Great, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Greg. And I will say that indoor skydiving is a tough act to follow, so. It's just a house, we'll do our best.
Well, if you were doing trampolines, it'd be a good fit, you know.
So, again, I'm Jimmy Terella from Wormont Homes. With me is Rick Simmons, he's the Director of Architecture from Wormont Homes. And we're here to present a new, a new plan. This is not, not a plan that's going to replace any of our existing product, but it's, it's a new plan to kind of fill a gap and I'll go through that. And there it is. So we'll, we'll get into some of the architecture in a little bit. I'm going to go through the presentation, just provide a little bit of background to why we're doing this and then Rick will, you know, fill in the gaps with explaining some of the architecture. Just a little bit of background, Wormont has fifty-nine detached single-family lots in Crown Farm. And then of that, we have a mix of thirty-one estate homes, forty-foot-wide front load and twenty-eight, thirty-two-foot-wide rear-load city homes. And for the purposes of this, we'll just focus on city homes because that's what the Alexandria, which is the new product, that's what that is. To date, we've built seven of the city homes and three of them have been Georgetown's. Four of them have been Ballon Trade Twos, which, just as a refresher, this is what the Georgetown was and is. And then this is the Ballon Trade Two. These are the twenty-eight city home lots and the ones that are kind of outlined in red are the potential lots to host the Alexandria. The one, the other ones are already either built or sold or under construction. The one, the other ones are already either built or sold or under construction. So, we're doing this because the Alexandria kind of fills a gap within the overall Crown program. Crown was originally conceptualized to be a, a place for everyone, have a price point for everyone and also provide move-up opportunities for residents within Crown. So theoretically, you could buy your home in Crown and then when you move up to your next home, you could stay within Crown. Because Wormald has actually exceeded the original price, sales price expectations, there's a little bit of a gap between the largest townhomes and then the existing Wormald single family homes. So we're trying to fill that gap with a product that truly blends with the, with the current architecture and everything that's been approved before, but just does offer some of the features that the market's been demanding as well as that price, price point that's, that's kind of missing. The features that, that I'm talking about are a ground level, main level, where you can come in off the street, come in from the garage and you have your living area, your kitchen, all on the first floor with a traditional three or four bedroom layout upstairs. The rooftop and terrace experience has also been very successful and in high demand within Crown, both with, with Wormald and the other builders. So this new product offers a full third floor rooftop experience. You'll see that about two-thirds of the upper terrace is outdoor. So, when we, when we went through this and when we, you know, do this in any community, our goal is to find a product that fits the existing footprints, fits and blends with the existing architecture, uses a lot of the same materials, your brick, your stone, your precast, you know, everything that's been approved before, as well as the color schemes that have been, you know, well-received and, and previously approved and just find that product that, that blends really well and seamlessly kind of mixes within the current community.
So what's the net impact to the footprint and your overall area of a unit from what was approved to this, this proposed new one? I assume it's a reduction because you're talking price points, I'm guessing it's a little bit smaller than what you have approved already for the sites?
The, the, it fits within the footprint, the only, the only area that's different, I think it's...
You want me to answer?
You, you can, yeah.
If you want. The, what we did was we moved the main living level down to the first floor, whereas we had three car garages on the original product. So the footprint is still the same and then we also incorporated a small, like Georgetown garden in the back of the unit. So it still occupies the same footprint as the original larger one, but we have, instead of just garage space, we have living space on the first floor.
And then area of the whole unit, is it, you're knitting those down, knitting that down too, or?
It's very comparable to the Ballantryt in square footage, except that we added the rooftop terrace area to, you know, because that really is a good selling feature and has been very successful for us.
Just for your reference, as you can see on the screen now is an example of the footprint, so lot ten, shown here, which is a corner unit, is the new proposed footprint, eleven and twelve are the existing, already approved footprints of the building. And then here is that courtyard that they, they explained.
And the height, the height's the same, so you're going essentially the same height on the front of the house?
Correct.
Stories, you're just carving out the back a little differently for the, for the terrace, is that right, or?
Mm-hmm, and we, we did a, half of the terrace is actually a covered porch. And that was actually to give mass to the roof because of the smaller second and third floors, where we didn't want it to look dramatically different from the existing houses. And, you know, the, the existing second empire architecture is very proud, it's very, it's very majestic and we wanted to have these smaller houses stand next to those and, you know, not look like less of a house, even though they don't have that fourth story. So, and in this slide, you actually have the, our Georgetown J unit is on the right side and then our, the new Alexandria.
That's a good study, because that's, that's kind of what I was leading up to, is, is the massing gonna really stand out, but it, it doesn't, okay, that's good. And so you were mentioning price point, how much, what's, what's the gap you're trying to develop for the, or the, I guess the gap you're trying to fill, but what does that then create for a margin and price point between either your high end or whatever you're looking to get for this, what is the difference?
So, right now, there's, there's approximately four hundred thousand dollars between maybe your, your upper end townhome that can top out around nine hundred to a million. And then our lower end is one point three to one point four, so we're trying to fill that upper one point one to low one point two range.
Wow, who would've thought?
Gaithersburg.
Okay.
It's Gaithersburg.
Okay, good, where else, you wanna go on the presentation?
Yes, see Jimmy jumped forward and showed you the first, the last slide first. He said, you know, I wanted to hold that to the end, you build your temptation and pop it up there. Go ahead and, if you can, put up the, that last slide, which shows the street perspective.
So we know how it turns out now, right?
This is actually a really good three D model of, of the product. On the corner is the C elevation of the, of the new Alexandria and then to the right of that is the B and E. And then behind it is actually the Steinbeck version of our Georgetown model. And so, you know, the, the new Alexandria, I used all the same architectural pieces and the same palette from the original approved architecture and we're actually reusing the same color schemes, the same brick, the same precast units, all the same detailing, the front entrances, you know, it has a very good urban feel to it at the street level with the, with the front entrances and the wrought iron fences and light poles and things. It, it all ties together very seamlessly with the existing approved architecture.
Well, the thing that really seems to change though with the roof line, the Alexandria roof line seems to be fairly straightforward, whereas the Georgetown and the other model have very complex roofs. Is that just my, my eye just catching that or is that, is that intentional? I mean, is that something?
It's, it's both, it's a little intentional architecturally, it's also intentionally value engineering wise, you know, getting the...
Value engineering, okay.
Getting the prices down, yes. But, you know, you can see the massing is still about the same. I didn't want the, I didn't want it to look dwarfed by the larger models and I think they really do hold their own next to the previously approved.
If you would, go back to the site plan that showed which lots were in play for, for this proposal.
And the idea is that these new houses are not to replace the existing houses, they're just to be offered. So we, we still see a lot of strong interest in the original homes and we do, we do anticipate that we're gonna be selling those just as strong as we have been, we just wanted to have a different offering. It's also in reflection to the, the different, our, the, the salespeople, they, you know, they get a lot of comments back from people, potential buyers. And so it's also a, a response to that by redoing the architecture.
Okay, that, that helps, I was just trying to remember what you showed earlier about the, the two blocks to the left are entire, would entirely, or be available entirely with this new model. To the right, you've got a little bit of a mix, I guess, that would, that would emerge potentially. And then nothing on the, on the horseshoe, is that right? Nothing would be, that would all stay with, with the currently approved.
Do the gardens require fencing, a unique fencing to, to block those in, which you don't have on the other houses?
We offer it as an option and it's a, the standard would be the wrought iron fencing that we have elsewhere and then we offer a more of a privacy wall kind of fencing in, but that's an option that you'd have to purchase. It becomes like a private courtyard.
The plan would be to use the previously approved, which is on the slide right now. That's currently wrapping the city home product, so that would be incorporated with the courtyard as well.
Well, let me ask you one more time, what, what is the net area difference in between the approved units and the proposed new, new home?
The square footage of, uh, this one is thirty, thirty-five hundred, roughly?
Yeah, it's probably about a thousand square feet smaller.
So from forty, four thousand something to three thousand something in that, that neighborhood, okay. Any other questions, at least for now, okay? I see some folks in the audience, did anybody have comments or want to say anything about this application? No? Okay. Greg, you wanna do the wrap up, I guess, and we'll get into some discussion?
Yep, staff recommends to the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings, recommendation, grant AFP dash seven four eight eight dash two thousand and seventeen, Wormald Homes, finding it compliant with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code with two conditions.
I guess the one point I wanted to kind of raise to the commission to discuss was the idea of diversity in unit types. And I, and I don't know, maybe the site plan's a best place to start, or that, that diagrammatic site plan that had the blocks identified. If you, if you are walking into the sales office now and, and buying one of the homes, whatever that breadth of, of model available is or was, if you imagine those last two, actually four, four sticks or four, four rows, only being able to choose, or everybody elected to choose this last model, how much diversity is within that model, within that block? Because before there was, there were two models, there were a lot of options on the facade, there were all things, all kinds of things going on which added that, that sort of, that nice texture to the, to the streetscape. And I, I'm wondering, based on these exhibits, if there is that same diversity, if this, this all goes to that one model?
Yeah, we do have three different front elevations and, and then seven different color schemes, so there's gonna be a lot of diversity in the materials as well.
I think, I think Lloyd, your, your comment of the roof line was probably one of the things that caught me too, is that, is there much going on there except that same roof line for options as, as they were?
Yeah, if you can, you flip through, we have three different front elevations. The body of the roof is gonna remain the same over top of the, the top level, but then we have dormers, we have gables and, and then different fenster.
There's something going on there that, that would help break it up, okay?
Yeah, and I carried it around to the sides also, so if you have a gable on the front, you have a gable on the sides. If you have dormers on the front, you have dormers on the sides.
And we do have the version of this that turns the corner on key lots, is that right?
Correct, yeah, we did a, an elevation, not for the, not for the A elevation, but for the B and the C, which have a lot more interest going on on the roofs. We did do a side elevation for those showing the Steinbeck, possibility to put them on Steinbeck. That only occurs, I think, twice, or in four of the houses on that, on that side.
But Greg, did we?
They do have an alley condition, if that's, the alley, the, before, the homes that had the side elevation on the alley were considered high visibility elevations as well.
But you have that already identified and that, that station?
And they have those identified as well, and they are carrying full brick. Thirty-five feet or so. Yeah, thirty-five feet towards the rear of the property, which is, again, comparable to what they did previously with the other approved architecture.
All right, any other comments or?
Is there any way we could, I don't wanna make it a condition, but when you've got three in a row of the Alexandria, that at least one of them have dormers or some kind of, something that gives it interesting that, no, all three aren't the same exact looking roof line, if you will.
Yeah, and, and that's part of, of what we do when we, when we're citing and re-siting, actually, you know, with, with Greg is, we make sure that the elevations are different, color schemes, so we'll have a stone elevation potentially.
Yeah, well, I think actually it's, you can't have the same house next to it or across the street or diagonally from it. So there's always gonna be a, a mix of, of architectural features and color selection.
And that's, and that's why staff was working with them on these applica, on this application, we did want them to bring a minimum of three elevations for your review.
Great, thank you.
All right.
You know, when I first sort of opened it up and it's, you know, after, I don't know, what, a hundred and fifty years on this commission, you kind of get used to the B B step, you know, and, and sometimes it can be a disaster, but I really kind of like what you guys did and I think you took what is a reduction in scale and a reduction in detail to some extent and did a really good job with it. I think you kept the primary elements, that porch and that covered porch, so at least some variegated roof, you know, lines.
Materials.
And then, yeah, some, some, you know, materials used like traditionally, but like a little bit wacky too. So it's, it's really, I find it really interesting and I think it'll be a great addition to the city, so.
He means that in the best possible sense.
Yeah, wacky's a compliment.
Yeah, actually, in the beginning, we were, we called these the mullet houses because it was all business up front and party in the back.
Right, and, and I mean, I really like some of the, sort of what I, what I'll call customer responsive, things like a little garden and things like that. I think it's, they're great little pieces that create, you know, some sense of community and some, something to share with your neighbor or something to be able to look out over your neighbors. If somebody's in that back alley doing, you know, planting some tomatoes or something, then they, that, that helps safety, it helps community, it helps a bunch of other things.
Yeah, good, good point.
It's all good stuff.
All good points, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well, we have a recommendation from staff to approve with two conditions, is there a motion please? Anybody?
Mr. Chair, I move that the, that we approve based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff reports, findings and recommendations, and move that we grant AFP seven four eight eight dash two thousand and seventeen, Wormald Homes, finding it compliant with section twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code with the two conditions as read into the directive.
Second.
So we moved to the second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck. Looking good over there, by the way, coming in a nice thing. All right, that takes us then to, from the commission, Phil, may I start with you, please? Nothing tonight, okay.
On Monday, I had the pleasure of attending with John, actually, John and I both were there and some staff people as well, the Kimco presentation about the, the propose, the proposals to update, if you will, the market square part of Kentlands, which right now, according to Kimco, is seventy-five percent occupied with twenty-five percent vacancy. And the hope is that within the next twelve months, that they will make some major changes to the current architecture as well as some of the streets or throughways. That should enliven and hopefully encourage new businesses to, to take part in this really, really important piece of Kentlands Lakeland's retail end of it. And I'm very encouraged, I think the commission will have a lot of work ahead of them on this as well and looking forward to working with Kimco and they seem very, like a, a very willing and able partner in this development. So I'm excited about that.
It was a good presentation, and maybe Trudy to piggyback on that remark, I think staff has begun to see some formal application process on that, right?
We, we haven't received any applications yet.
Oh, nothing yet, okay.
And that's why it was okay for you all to attend that presentation and just to be part of that.
Okay, good, all right.
Thank you for that.
Well, soon I have to. Soon, 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 all right, good, Matt, anything?
Nothing from me.
Russ Alley? You had, you had the retail presentation, which I think we had to, we, we had a conflict, I'm sorry, but...
Yeah, I, I actually tried making it both, but then I realized that I wasn't gonna be able to fit in the podium anyway, so I didn't try, but it was an excellent presentation and I was reminded about all the design efforts that have been put forward towards the Kentlands retail area. And so Mike Rockin did an excellent job and we had an excellent turnout. And our next presentation is on April twenty-fifth and we're still working on the details, but our goal is to present success stories of other similar downtowns who have struggled with vacancies and, you know, that similar uses just being the first option for a renter and how they turned that around. And so we're looking at places like Frederick, Ellicott City to come and speak on that.
Great.
More of a panel discussion.
Oh, great, was the presentation, was this last one videotaped or?
No, sadly because the Mary City Council went session, the staff could not provide assistance to us.
No bootleg recordings or anything?
No.
City, city, assistant city attorney standing there, did he just ask for a bootleg recording? Okay, thanks, Russ Alley, staff, who wants to jump in first, Greg and Trudy?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Some of the commissioners I've introduced, but I'd like to introduce our newest planner with the Community Planning Division, or part of the Planning Division, and this is Ray Roaks.
Oh, hello, Ray.
Evening, how are you all?
Good, how you doing? Welcome.
Thank you for recognizing me, and it's a pleasure to meet you.
I actually didn't recognize you, so I...
I saw you looking at me like, I don't have any comments at this time.
Thanks. Specialty, or what's the?
He'll be doing site plan review.
Okay, so part of the...
Yeah, he'll be working under Greg and...
Great, all right, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, what else?
On Monday, while you were, the two of you were at KimCo, the city had its annual planning retreat to discuss the strategic directions, and I'll be bringing them to you on another day when we finalize them.
Sure. All right, great.
And that also was not recorded, so.
Keep my fingers crossed.
Greg, what's, what's up on your end of the planning office?
Our next planning commission meeting is March 15th, and a reminder as well, joint work session for Kentland Apartments is coming up on March 13th, as well as a joint public hearing for the sketch plan for Saul's property.
Sure.
Which is scheduled from April 3rd.
Is that up yet? That's up on the site now?
It should be on the website.
Yes, it is, on the website.
And then lastly, the State of the City is scheduled for April 13th.
That's right. Excellent. At the, at Asbury?
Yes.
That's correct, yes.
And you'll be receiving invitations.
Fantastic, thanks. All right, anything else from either corner here? No? All right, if nothing else, have a good evening, and we're adjourned.